All right, let's call the meeting to order at six oh eight P M. Thank you everyone for coming to today's Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council Meeting. My name is Gabriel Callen. I'm the president of this council. I have a few announcements to make. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on our P R N C YouTube page. As well as our webpage, P R N C dot org. All meeting attendees will be muted when they join the meeting. Attendees may address the board in one of two situations. Comment on agenda item or provide general public comment. After each agenda item is read out loud and before a board vote is taken on that. Item if any, I will ask if any member of the public wishes to address the board regarding the agenda item being considered. At that time, the meeting attendees can electronically raise their hand to speak by pressing star nine. If they are using the telephone for audio or clicking the raise your hand button on Zoom. That will prompt the president that you wish to speak. I'll go down the list of those who raised their hand, turn on their audio one at a time and ask him or her to continue. Provide public comment within a specific time period. When the speaker's time expires, I will let the speaker know that their time has expired. Thank them for the comment and turn off the audio for that speaker. This process will continue until all attendees who raise their hands spoke. At that time, the board will discuss the motion and take a vote if they choose so. As noted in the meeting agenda, there is an item dedicated to public comment on items not on the agenda, but within the preview of the board. When the item comes up during the course of the meeting, I'll ask if any member of the public wishes to address the board. Regarding any issues that is not on the agenda, but is within the domain of the board's action and capabilities. At that time, the meeting attendees can electronically raise their hand to speak using the same procedures described previously. Please note that under Brown Act, the board is prevented from discussing or acting on a matter that is brought to its attention during the general common period. However, the issue raised by a member of the public may become the subject of a future board meeting. Public comments are limited to two minutes per speaker unless adjusted by the presiding officer at his or her discretion. All right. Becky, you want to take role?
Okay, um. Hope, uh, just give me one second. You know what, Gabriel, I'm gonna, uh. I have my sheet right here just.
That's fine. All right, David Baylen. Zaps and Hilda.
Here.
Thank you, Jason. Is absent Louis. Is absent Becky.
Present.
Thank you, Brandy.
Here.
Thank you, Brandy Jennifer. Absent boss is absent Christine.
Here.
Thank you, Gabriel. Here, we do not have quorum yet. What we could do is let's skip to item number six, updates from representatives of public officials and city departments. I, I got, uh, I know Assad was gonna make an announcement today on behalf of the City Lighting Bureau. And Diana is here as well.
I'd also like to point out, we don't have a note taker, so people need to, people need to speak clearly. It's the only thing on recording.
All right, let me bring in Assad real quick. Assad, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the board. Good evening. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of the Bureau of Street Lighting. My colleagues Eddie Chavez and Valinda Pina couldn't make it. Because the meeting is on such short notice. Last meeting, Becky and Jason brought to our attention that Wilbur is still out. So I worked with our team and we're putting expedite on the fixture of Wilbur. Further, Jason today made a field check on Tampa and Wilbur and shared the pictures with my crew. And we put a new service request for the area on Tampa and Wilbur. In which it appears there is more activities, new activities for wire theft. Well, as you know, the bureau is limited with resources. However, with the help of CD twelve, we will manage to get some resources as soon as possible and get it addressed. If there is any other areas that we are missing, please let me know and we'll try to take care of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assad. Any comments or questions for him? Analysts. Attendees.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Assad. I appreciate it. All right, then bring Diana in. Let's see if she has anything to say. Diana, the floor is yours if you have anything to add.
Um, yeah, I just have a really quick announcement. Um, so my name is Diana. I'm with the Office of Assemblywoman Suzette Valdarez. I just wanted to give a quick update on the Reseda exit. As you guys know, Caltrans said that they were going to start working on it in the beginning of October. However, they have already been out and they're preparing and landscaping the area. I know Becky saw them earlier today. Working on the exit. So our office is confident that they'll have the exit ready and fixed by the time they estimated, which was by the end of the year. And, um, because of the meeting last week, Caltrans saw how important the exit is to the community. So I believe they are trying to expedite it as much as possible. Awesome. Just want to say thank you to you guys again, um, for hosting and for everyone that attended and spoke to Caltrans. So if anyone has any questions, I can try to answer them, but if not, I will forward them to Anthony.
Thank you, Diana. Any questions for Diana?
No, thank you.
No questions. Thank you, Diana, for coming. Actually, we have one question from Brandy.
Yeah, I, I did, but my button would, my thing would click. Um, yeah, are there any major legislative? Anythings that the assemblywoman is working on right now?
Um, so session is over already, so, um, she does have a couple of bills that are waiting for the governor's signature. Um, I can pull them up real quick. All right, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but I can, um, email them to you if you'd like.
Okay.
Is, is she working on anything for next round? Should she be there next round? I guess she already pairing or is she waiting?
No, our legislative team is working on a couple of things. I know one of the big things is, um, fire insurance. I know a lot of. HOAs and fire insurance rates are going up, so she is trying to see if there's any ways that we can reduce that or work with the Department of Insurance. Um, there was also a couple of crime victims bills that she was working on. So, um, if you guys have any legislative ideas, please reach out to us. But yeah, our legislative team is working. For things for next session.
Cool. Um, can I put something on your plate since there's nothing else to do right now?
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Um, I know that, I know that she's, uh, worked with autism a lot. Um, it is exceptionally hard in the entire U S, including the state of California for adults to get access to diagnoses. Um, for autism spectrum disorder. Um, I have found literally one place in the entire state of California that does adult diagnosis for women. And takes insurance. So, uh, you know, that, that is becoming a bigger issue as, as we're finding more and more adults, particularly women. That were not diagnosed previously and, um, as usually as they have kids that are diagnosed, then they start to find out they themselves need that. Um, so anything that she can do to help encourage and increase access to a diagnosis for, for especially any of the, any of the neurodivergence, but autism in particular. Uh, would be gratefully helpful because it's such a desperate need that there are a lot of scammers now that are. Selling for a couple hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars that you can get an unofficial diagnosis. That doesn't mean anything. It's just somebody saying like, yeah, I think you have it, but then they charge and make it look like it's official when it's not. Employers won't take it, the state won't take it, and it's, it's a lot of running around and there are increasing number of grifters and scammers that are taking a lot of money from people. So.
Right, no, that, that sounds like a really good idea, and I do think that's something that she'd probably be interested in. So I'll definitely. Send it over to our legislative team and if they have any questions, um, I'll have them reach out to you for more.
Yeah, I'm happy to help.
Thank you, Diana. Becky?
Um, I just have a question, Brandy. Um, hopefully this is not out of order. Are you saying that there's a lot of adults who have autism who have not been diagnosed and can't get treatment?
That does appear to be, uh, even the, even the U N, uh, called that out as an issue a few years ago that, um. Adult diagnosis worldwide is very difficult to come across. And without those diagnoses, they can't get, um, support or accommodations or in some cases medication that's necessary. And while it's appears according to various groups to be an issue for all adults, it is a much bigger issue for women. Because, uh, even back when I was a kid, the, and even still, there are some people that think that being male is a symptom of autism that is necessary. In fact, there's, there's one organization that still lists autism signs as being male and white. This is just because that's the people that tend to have the best access to diagnoses. So, yeah, yeah, it's a thing.
Thank you. That's, I'm kind of surprised. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I feel informed now.
Any other comments or questions for Diana? With no further comments. Thank you, Diana, as for attending as always. Always welcome to be here and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to public comment. Any, anybody from public, uh, that wants to speak? Please raise your hand. No, no public comment. All right, we still don't have quorum. I just messaged Jason, he says not coming. So let's see if Jennifer can make it.
We're at six twenty, so it's past the six fifteen mark we were hoping thing.
Uh, Jennifer messaged me back right now and she said that, uh, she's with the nurse and she's unable to make it.
She is unable to make it.
She is understandably unable to make it.
Of course, definitely understandable. Um.
Who else can we reach out to?
Boss that had said he can't make it, but. Anybody want to reach out to a boss real quick?
I, he's in another meeting.
Oh, he is?
I already did, yeah.
So we don't have quorum. So we cannot proceed in this agenda item. And it doesn't, it does not look like we're gonna get quorum. Based on the fact.
Did you want me to reach out to boss or somebody else as you said?
Yeah, you can reach out just real quick and see if you can.
Okay.
Okay, hold on a moment.
We can wait a minute. It's quick agenda item.
Jump in for five minutes.
It's quicker for me to actually call him because sometimes he doesn't have like, you know, ready access to, I think, his texts. I might have to log off and just come right back on. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, I'll be back.
Nothing better to do. I can answer questions about autism.
Sure. I'm sort of familiar with it actually. I know quite a few people who have it, whose children have it. Several people in my neighborhood, they're great kids, just love their families. I used to love listening to them next door swimming in the pool. Every single day, just so happy.
I just messaged David as well to see if he can come on.
Kids are great in general.
Aren't they great?
Oh, Christine's back.
Hi, unfortunately, I wasn't able to reach him.
Okay, let's wait to see if David will reply back. See if he has said that he will, if we don't have quorum, last resort to message him, I'll try to come on. I know he's at dinner right now with his family, but let's see if he can reply.
Well, I postponed my dinner.
Me too.
For the special meeting, we're so committed.
Thank you. We'll wait about two minutes and then we'll have to. Call it a no.
Yeah. Congress of Neighborhoods is. Did anybody else try to sign up for that L E P D, um, training thing and then never hear back?
No, but we do have a comment from, uh, Brian. One second, Brian. Brian, floor is yours.
I just asking what the initials, what the anagram on this agenda item you have is, uh, it's not clear to me what it is.
Becky?
The what?
The, the organization that this agenda item, if you can get to it, is about.
Oh. It's, um, uh, Jeff Hand, if we could have Jeff Hand, uh, Vicky Briskman is on. She could explain it. It's the, uh, Porter, it's the Chatsworth Porter Ranch Chamber of Commerce. They have, um, an annual luncheon. Um, and, uh, that's, uh. You know, we have a lot of businesses here in Porter Ranch, so we're just trying to be a sponsor.
I, I don't want to.
I don't think we're talking about it, family.
Who it was, that's all.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
All right, looks like David is coming on in a minute. He said.
It's a beautiful night.
Let's all go out. It is beautiful.
Yeah, let's go.
All right.
Guys, please come take me. I need a break.
Because after now, we won't talk about any neighborhood council business.
Thank you, David, for taking time coming. I know you're at dinner right now. This will be quick. I appreciate you being here.
Thanks, David.
No worries. You got it.
All right, thank you. Let's go to item number seven. Uh, Becky, you want to read the agenda?
Oh, can you just do it, Gabriel?
Sure. Discussion on possible action to spend five hundred dollars to purchase advertisement package. For, uh, Chatsworth Porter Ranch Chamber of Commerce, S O T C luncheon to be held September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at Knollwood Country Club. And then who is representing? Jeff is?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Well, it's not Jeff, it's.
Becky, hi.
And I've got to leave in two minutes to start our enhancement committee. Hi, Hilda.
Hi.
Basically, this is our annual event. I think it's our eighteenth or nineteenth year. At the state of the community, we're having an election. Um, symposium, basically, we will be having the two sheriff's candidates, the, um, mayor, mayor, Oriole candidate, supervisor candidates. Assembly candidates has come talk. Um, they'll give their speeches. There will be questions and answers. It's a luncheon at Knollwood. And the package that is put together is an advertising package where you can display your standup banner. Your name will show in the sponsor board and you get a half page ad in the, um, program.
Thank you, thank you, Vicky. Uh, David Baylen, floor is yours.
How many tickets are we, uh, being allocated for this money?
Uh, that would be a gift, David, and that is against Dunn's rules. You are not allowed to have gifts. The tickets cost fifty dollars for non-members, forty for members. But giving you tickets would be giving you a gift. Um, I know this came up last year with someone who challenged and wanted a free seat, but, uh, I talked to Mariel about it and I've spoken with Dunn several times. They thought would giving you a gift and we cannot do that and you cannot accept that, so. They can't have that.
Is there a problem with it? Is there a problem with the city with us if, uh, the community is, um, having to pay for tickets? Funding wise?
No, we have funded this. Chatsworth has, we, we've funded this every year. We put this package together just for neighborhood councils. There are other sponsorships and other packages. This one was put together just to do advertisement because that's all the councils allowed to do.
Any further questions, David?
Oh, call the vote.
Thank you, Brandy. Floor is yours.
Um, how many people do we expect will see the advertisement? Are you talking like ten, a hundred, a thousand?
At this moment, I think they're at about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty people. Um, but we get a lot usually at the end of the, you know, last minute. So right now I think they've got. Seventeen tables, I think Jerry told me.
Okay, so about five dollars per person. Or fifty, um.
It's fifty dollars per table.
No, no, I was thinking like the number of people that might see it versus how much we're paying.
Oh, gotcha.
Um.
Well, it's going in a, um, program and that gets, you know, passed out also.
Yeah, I, I had the same concerns about David that, that, because it's not really open to the public unless they pay for it, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Adam. Floor is yours.
Sorry to put this out, but, uh, unless I am sadly mistaken. The neighborhood council system is precluded from funding any event in which the public is not free to attend. Uh, it, it, it may be that people have done it before and Jeff may call me and say, what the hell are you doing? But the fact is, the N C system has always been precluded from funding any event in which the public is not able to attend free of charge.
That was my understanding as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to leave. We have a beautification enhancement committee meeting for our neighborhood council that I have to go to. I cheer up it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Quick, one more quick question, even if it's for advertising, you're stating that you can't.
Correct. The N C funding, if you look at the N C funding, uh, manual, I believe you'll see it in there. I, I haven't got it in front of me or I'd look it up for you, but, but it has been a longstanding statement. And I think if you talk to Raquel or Petty or anyone who's been around for a while, they'll tell you. That, you know, the whole idea is that we spend our money and give it to the facilities. Because people are allowed to attend free of charge. I know it's not what you want to hear, but unfortunately I have to be honest. And I could be wrong and maybe somebody changed something. All right, I'll throw that out there. This is possibility.
I'm looking up.
You're looking it up. I believe.
Becky has a question and I have a question after her.
Becky, floor is yours.
Go, go ahead, Hilda.
Okay, my question is, I don't understand. How can the public go in there free? There's a luncheon. Who's paying for the luncheon if you don't pay? I mean, it doesn't make sense for the public to come to a, um, a nice place and, um, food is being served and who's paying for the food then?
The food is always paid for by donations that are given to the event. And just like you're doing here, you're advertising whenever, for instance, the Granada Hills Chamber of Commerce gets a lot of money from the N Cs. And they do that because they, they throw a street fair. The street fair is open and free to anybody who wants to attend it. And it's, it's just the way the city has required it over all the years. Uh, you know, when we have to, when, when a, when a stakeholder is asked to pay for something, they may be precluded from being able to attend. And our whole, our, as a city, our intention is to allow anybody and everybody to attend anything that we fund.
I see. Thank you.
Yes, Becky.
Uh, I think. If we, um, are sponsoring an event, I, I'm not quite sure that's true. And if it is true, Brian. If, when we put everything in, the city will deny it. So, um, I'm not under the impression that you can't sponsor an event. Especially a Porter Ranch event.
Becky, I know you've been around.
No, I know. I'm just giving you my opinion and on your.
I know, and I appreciate it. I, I could, as I said, I could be wrong.
Okay, and I, I could be too, but I think that we can sponsor events. We sponsor events at schools. We do all kinds of stuff. So, uh, just to put that thought out there, we can get a clarification. I'm sure if that's the case, that, that, um, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment will decline our request, so.
I have a question.
Yes, Brandy, go ahead.
Go ahead and let, let me do it while.
Hold on.
Oh, uh, my, my, my concern is why don't we just, well, it's not a concern. Let's just vote. And then if we get denied by the city, we get denied by the city. I mean, they're gonna say yes or no. They're the one they're gonna approve it. So might as well, since we're here, let's do it.
Here, this is regular coffee.
Please do, please.
Thank you.
Benny, he loves croissants, chocolate croissants, and then there's another chocolate.
Okay.
Randy?
Um.
I love our moms.
So, all right, this. This might be a little gray area if we are not considered, if we are considering this as advertising as opposed to event sponsorship. If it's, if, if the advertising is legitimately considered event sponsorship, then. My reading of this suggests that we're not allowed to sponsor something that isn't fully open and free to the public. If it's considered advertising, the same as it would be like if we paid Facebook or Google, then, uh, that's listed under a second. Thing that doesn't have any restrictions like that. So, uh, it might be just a judgment call by the. By the city as to which one it qualifies under, but yeah, if it's a. Reading this, if, if we are sponsoring or co-sponsoring an event, it must be free and obit to the public. And, uh, just so Hilda knows, because back before the pandemic, we would hold open free events all the time, like the holiday parties and stuff where we paid for food. And there was free food available for anybody that walked in off the street. So this did used to happen. It just hasn't since COVID. Um, but yeah, this is, this is what I'm seeing.
Well. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Brandy. It is listed on the agenda item. It was brought to me as an advertising package. So. Taking everything in consideration, what we could do is we can vote on it. And, uh, see how it plays out because it is advertising and I understand what David said and Brian said and Brandy said, which hundred percent makes hundred, makes sense. To the T, but would the board like to move forward?
Gabriel, a quick question you might want to ask. Um, have any of the other neighborhood councils participated in this already?
Yes, Chatsworth has. Chatsworth.
We have a lot more than that, so I'm just so only Chatsworth.
Chatsworth is what?
I'm more. Gabriel, you gotta, you gotta realize Chatsworth, Chatsworth, um, what's the, what's the slogan? They, they, they have their own drummers. So they're not, you know, they kind of do their own elections, so they really don't really, they kind of answer to their own beat. So I think we should be really careful about not following Chatsworth and make our own decisions as a Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council. Or if Granada or, you know, like what Brian Allen said, you know, what would, what would Brian Allen, what would they be doing at this time? It's just a thought.
Thank you, David. Becky?
Well, this is our community. This is our businesses in Porter Ranch and Chatsworth. So I just wanted to throw that out there and keep that, have everybody keep that in mind. This isn't for, uh, businesses that. Are Granada Hills. This is Porter Ranch, Chatsworth Porter Ranch, um, Chamber of Commerce and. Just to, you know, kind of keep that in mind, that's all.
True.
Thank you. Thank you for all the feedback. Any further questions or comments? All right, should we call the vote? All right, David?
Oh, 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 all right, yes.
Thank you, Hilda.
Yes.
Thank you, Jason. Is absent Louis. Is absent Becky? Thank you, Jason. Is absent Louis? Is absent Becky?
Yes.
Thank you, Brandy.
We had an attendee with their hand up.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Who does?
Sharon.
Yeah, we're in the middle of roll, call them. Let me call the, let me continue the vocal, vocal first. Brandy?
I don't know, five hundred dollars for advertising to a hundred and forty people, sounds like a bit much for us, so I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Jennifer is absent. Boss is absent. Christine?
Yes.
Gabriel, yes, motion passes. Thank you, Sharon. Floor is yours.
Um, yes, the thing is, I would think, I looked at your invoice, and the thing is, if you're getting a booth. Or something which I can't remember, um, if that said, um. On the invoice and this at Noelwood Country Club is not open to the public, it could end up possibly being, um. An issue, but again, I looked at the invoice and I'm not sure, but that would be probably something that. Could be a problem on there, but anyway, thank you. Sorry, I was. I wasn't quick on going and hitting the raise my hand, so thank you anyway.
We do, we do not have a booth to answer your question, Sharon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, let's go to item number eight real quick. Board members, committees, any updates? I have Becky.
I'm just very excited that they started the work on the one eighteen freeway. When I drove by there today, there were like twenty people out there and a bunch of trucks. They worked till three o'clock. This is very exciting.
Thank you, Becky. Any, any other comments? No further comments. Next board meeting is October twelfth, where we'll be, uh, installing a new, uh, member. And that's agenda meeting at six forty PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you, David, for taking time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.